Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community. Also, a moment of silence to include Mr. George Lowry and family. George was a graduate of Scranton High School. Prior to his retirement, he was the Animal Control Officer for the city and before that, the Director of Na'ag Zoo. And I'd like to also keep continued prayers for the Scranton firefighter Captain Roger Rogalevich, who had a cardiac episode last week, excuse me, while fighting a fire. I got news today that he's doing better and he's supposed to come home today. So that's great news. Thank you. So before we start tonight's meeting, we are very excited to honor and recognize the first women of Lackawanna County. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me do a roll call first. Sorry, roll call. Formality, sorry.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. King.
Mr. King is dialing in.
He'll be dialing in shortly, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll take it from the top again. Before tonight's meeting, we are very excited to honor and recognize the first women of Lackawanna County to hold elected officers and rightfully fitting during Women's History Month. A few weeks ago, an involved and caring resident by the name of Debbie or Deborah Nihus reached out to me with this wonderful idea. And myself, being a girl dad of three beautiful, strong women, I jumped at the idea. Deborah and Kathy Carrera are very, I would like to refer to her as our proclamation wizard, went right to work researching and putting together this monumental task in such a short time. I'm so very proud of them and appreciate their great efforts for this evening's recognition event. They deserve the credit and a big round of applause. Is Deborah here? Thank you. And I would also like to thank the illustration and design class under the direction of Patrick McLean and the print production class under the direction of Ms. Renella of the CTC for creating this awesome banner that's over here. My culinary kids will make food for both classes as a thank you to them. Whereas 1995, the United States President have issued a series of annual proclamations designating the month of March as Women's History Month. And whereas the city of Scranton, a county seat of Lackawanna County, desires to acknowledge Women's History Month by paying tribute to the women who are among the first to hold notable public offices throughout the county. Now whereas the city of Scranton proudly recognizes the following women. Bonnie Rosiak, the first woman to hold the position of Supervisor in Benton Township in 2010. And Catherine Kocin-Stokowski, the first woman to hold the position of Supervisor in Clifton Township in 1968. And thereby became the first woman to hold the position of Township Supervisor in the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And Mary Swingle, the first woman to hold the position of Supervisor in Covington Township in 1985. And Melissa Carney, the first woman, I'm sorry, the first chairwoman of the Board of Supervisors in Covington Township in 2021. Adeline Rocco, the first woman to hold the position of Supervisor in Jefferson Township in 2022. And Miriam Stangline, the first woman to hold the position of Supervisor in Roaringbrook Township in 1978. And Michelle Dutchnik, the first woman to hold the position of Supervisor in Scott Township in 2006. And Patricia Maroon, the first woman to hold the position of Supervisor in Springbrook Township in 1991. And Dolores Nicholas, the first woman to hold the position of Supervisor in 1989. And the first chairwoman of the Board of Supervisors in Thornhurst Township in 1992. And Shirley Barrett, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in Archibald Borough in 2014. Nancy Hadley, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Archibald Borough in 1988. And Maria Tomassoni, the first woman to become Council President in Archibald Borough in 2017. And Jeanette Achiari Mariani, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in Blakely Borough in 2006. And Audrey Hanusik, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Blakely Borough in 1989. And Patty Lawler, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in Clark's Green Borough in 2018. And a former mayor of Clark's Summit Borough, beginning in 2013. Nancy Williams Stella, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Clark's Green Borough in 1984. And Marie King, the first woman to become Council President in Clark's Green Borough in 2007. And Margaret Terrell O'Connor Fletcher, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in Clark Summit Borough in 1989. Elizabeth McFarland, the first woman to serve as member of council in Clark Summit Borough in 1985. And Jermaine Carey, the first woman to become Council President in Clark Summit Borough in 2008. And Laureen Daniels, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Dalton Borough in 1990. And Josephine Schultz, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Dixon City Borough in 1960. And Barbara Mecca, the first woman to serve as Council President in Dixon City Borough in 2006. Helen Dominic, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in Dunmore Borough in 1992. Lois O'Neill Kelly, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Dunmore Borough in 1985. And Margaret Haggerty, the first woman to become Council President in Dunmore Borough in the early 1960s. And Eleanor Colley, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in German Borough in 1974. Janice Young, the first woman to serve as a member of council in German Borough in 1984. And Katie Hoise, the first woman to become Council President in German Borough in 2011. And Beverly Valvano Merkel, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in Jessup Borough in 2003. And Sharon Reitston, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Jessup Borough in 1982. Mary Neduch, the first woman to serve as Burgess in Mayfield Borough in 1942. And again, in 1951. Barbara Lebowski, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Mayfield Borough in 1966. And Regina Renner, the first woman to become Council President in Mayfield Borough in 1972. And Loretta Segalia, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in Music Borough. Gloria Washo, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Music Borough in 1980. And Cheryl Mercatelli, the first woman to become Council President in Music Borough. And Rosemary Werner, the first woman to hold office of Mayor in Moscow Borough in 2016. And Carol Ferk Edwards, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Moscow Borough. And Michelle Abissato, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in Old Forge Borough in 2006. And Mildred Legg, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Old Forge Borough in 1990. And Mildred O'Boyle, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Elephant Borough in 1976. And Lonnie Kavulich-Luiselle, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in Taylor Borough in 2022. And Sharon Saltis-Sparano, the first woman to serve as a member of council in Truitt Borough in 1990. And Mary Corosek, the first woman to serve as Burgess and Vanling Borough in 1940. And Charlotte Morrell, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in the city of Carbondale in 1984. And Mary Lil Hazelit, the first woman to become a member of city council and the first woman to become President of city council in the city of Carbondale in 1994. And Paige Gebhardt-Cognetti, the first woman to hold the office of Mayor in the city of Scranton in 2020. Grace O'Malley Schimmelfening is the first woman to become a member of city council in the city of Scranton in 1974. And the first ever Old Forge Borough manager. And Judy Cotelli, the first woman to become the city council president in the city of Scranton in 2006. And finally, Laureen Cummings, the first woman sworn as Commissioner in Lackawanna County in 2016. Thank you, ladies. So now we would like to come down front. We have a list of sign-ins of the people that showed up tonight, which is great. And in the event that there's someone here who's going to receive this proclamation or if not, we will make sure they get to the boroughs and jurisdictions where they can be dispersed to them.
Okay, at this time, I'll read the names and then you can come up for your proclamation. Mayor Lonnie Kavulich-Luiselle? Laureen Cummings? Katie Hoise? Loretta Segalia? Marie King? Patty Lawler? Nancy Williams Stella? Maria Tomassoni? Adeline Rocco? Maury Menora for Margaret O'Connor? Jermaine Carey? And Tony Jordan is here for Miriam Stangline? Lexi Kelly is here for Elizabeth McFarland? And Melissa Kearney, she's here for herself and for Mary Swingle? Michael Hanusik is here for Audrey Hanusik? Lisa Merkel Kennedy for Mayor Beverly Merkel? And our very own Mayor Paige Cognetti? Is there anyone who's not signed in who's here?
I'll take you there. Ain't no smiling faces.
I'm sorry, what? All right, let's get started. Dispense with the reading in a minute, please.
Third order, 3A. Lackawanna County Planning Commission Evaluation Report.
Come on, guys, let's get through this.
Reviewed March 15, 2023. 3B. City of Scranton, 2021 Audited Financial Statement Received by City Council on March 21, 2023, from Kohansky Company, PC.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one or two quick ones. The first, there will be a Good Friday Fish Fry at the Shiloh Baptist Church on 1936 Wayne Avenue from 12 to 6 p.m. on April 7. And it's sign in or take out for $15. And there's a couple of numbers for contact that I could provide if anyone's interested. And then, secondly, I just wanted to give my condolences to the Lowry family on the passing of George Lowry. I know that Councilman McAndrew had announced it previously, but I was very sorry to hear of his passing. And I know that he's done a great deal for the city of Scranton in the past and for the animals within our city. And we've just, you know, we've lost someone who was, I think, very important to the city. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that yesterday I had the opportunity to visit down at the DPW with our director, Scott Petroface. And it's something that I've done in the past with previous directors, and I was really glad to have the opportunity to meet with him. And we met for about two hours and drove around the city and discussed the changes that have been happening within DPW for the better and also, you know, what plans they have for the future. And I was just happy to be able to do that. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I have one announcement. So for three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, March 35, I'm 31, I'm sorry. It feels like it's going to be that long, right? April 1 and 2, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. each day, there's a spring and Easter plant sale fundraiser at the Greenhouse Project. Where is it? It's on 200 Arthur Avenue, Scranton, PA, across from the Black Watch Cafe. It's their first fundraiser of the year, offers beautiful flowers and plants for your spring and Easter celebrations. We specialize in providing healthy plants grown with love. Your purchases support the public programs offered by this community greenhouse where plants grow people. Be part of the goodness growing in our community and decorate your house with joy at the same time. And that is all I have.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hodawan at Scranton. I have here in my formerly nicotine-stained fingers the 2021 audit, which you received on the 21st and is dated March 17. It is on the city's website, by the way. It is also the latest audit in at least the last 20 years. And I would like to know if the mayor's made a decision on implementing the penalty clause.
Well, we're still waiting to hear as well as you.
Will there be a public caucus to discuss the findings?
I'm sure we can have one.
That would be nice. I would like to see both, I'd like to see management here, Kohansky and Rainey and Rainey, who were hired specifically to do audit prep work. You know, if you look at this, most of the financial statements will make people's eyes glaze over and go into a catatonic state. But there's an interesting paragraph on page four of the introduction, and I'll read it. "Management has omitted a management's discussion and analysis that accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America require to be presented to supplement the basic financial statements. Such missing information, although not a part of the basic financial statements, is required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, who considers it to be essential part of the financial reporting for placing the basic financial statements in an appropriate operational, economic, or historical context." This is where you get away from the glazed-over eyes and you talk turkey. This is where you say, A, these are the issues we had in 2021, be it COVID or any other issue. And it should be in every audit every year. I hope when we have this caucus, you will ask management why they omitted this section. What's the status of the union negotiations, arbitration?
Well, what I've heard also is same as last week.
Okay, second verse, same as the first.
Right, and then arbitration starts April.
Okay, and how about the DPW contract that was signed on September 13? Is that, are they going to be disclosed to the public by putting it on the website?
Frank, what do we get on that?
The administration is waiting for our labor attorney to forward that document back.
Oh, it only takes six months. Boy, must be hard legal work after they already signed it. But how about the statements of financial interest? When are they going to hit the website?
He has an answer also for that. You received the answer.
The deadline is May 1, and they will be on the website the next day.
So they'll be on the website May 2, correct?
That's when we'll submit them.
That's when you'll submit them. When will they hit the website?
They say 24 to 48 hours, so extend that a day.
We shall see. That's something that'll be a good letter to the editor because, you know, you're not supposed, if you're a political candidate, you're not supposed to take your oath of office without having submitted it. without having submitted that before you become sworn in. You get sworn in, you got an issue. And finally, we all saw in the paper about the $2.26 million that should have gone from real estate taxes, that should have gone to the school district, and in fact, last year went to the city of Scranton. Not the city's error, not their fault. The fault of apparently a coder from Harris Local Government. The point is, if we have to pay that money over to the school district, are we going to try to recoup it from Harris Local Government? That's a whole lot of money to be pulled out of the budget. We going to sue them?
I don't know about that. We had a brief discussion in caucus related to that. So we're still waiting to get information back from administration.
That's a kick. That should be in management's discussion and analysis paragraph for the 2022 audit, and I will be looking for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Fay Frannis.
Fay Frannis, Scranton. I'd like to ask council to get some information for me, please. I'd like to know how many times that Mr. King has missed meetings in the last year, either virtually or just not at all. I'd like a number for that next week, please. I don't think it's right. He's president of council, he should be here. If he has a job, either take the job or take this job. For me? Anyway, I want to discuss what Joan said. All you council members and Mr. King said the mayor didn't get back to him yet as far as the penalty. What does it take for one of you? She was here tonight. Why don't you ask her directly? Are you going to apply this penalty to the audit people or not? Get an answer. I mean, are you afraid of her? I don't understand.
I'm not.
Well, nobody's doing anything. This is going on for months and months that Marie Jones has been asking this, and nobody's giving her an answer. Now, I'm here to talk about the DPW and the overtime. Last week, Mr. King and Mr. Smearle said that they thought it should be recorded, every bit of overtime. Mr. McAndrew, Mr. Schuster, and Jessica, do you feel that overtime at DPW should be recorded as to why they worked overtime? Jessica?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Absolutely. So that information, we just received at 3:30.
For me?
We received that information, we've been asking for it, at 3:32 today, so.
What did you get? What information did you get?
We got the overtime and the explanations.
You got the reasons?
Well, yeah, but I didn't get to take a look at it. It's for two years. But I'm just happy to report out to you.
Two years?
22 and 23 was asked for.
Well, I got it for 2022, and there was no reasons, there was no reasons from January till, like, July.
I didn't take a deep dive at it yet.
Well, I'm telling you what it did.
I got it on the way here.
And then the ones from July till, like, December were all, like, made up. Calling people back, they can't do that. Chris Smith can't go do that during the day, he has to get overtime for that. So anyway, Mr. Schuster, how do you feel? Do you feel it should be recorded?
Absolutely.
Okay, then why don't you people do something about it? Because if I find out that they're not recording it, then you guys should pass legislation to make sure that they do. Because this can't be, taxpayers are paying for this. And Mr. Petroface, the director now, he's the biggest abuser of overtime anyway. Last year, he made $47,000. He's made $29,000 in overtime. Now, he doesn't need it because he's getting $75,000. So suppose there was an accident when they're out working overtime and they hit a car, maybe a woman got hurt. And she sues them, and she says, what were they doing out at this hour? And they don't have any records. That's a good lawsuit. There's enough reason right there for records being recorded. And the reason they don't want them recorded is because they don't really have a reason, because they just say they worked overtime when they really didn't. They don't want anything recorded because they're getting all this money, every one of them, all the workers and the supervisors. They're all getting money that we're paying for, thousands and thousands. Look at Scott, he got $29,000 himself. So some people made $16,000, and all the workers made a lot. So add it up, add it up. So now about Rubicon. I asked you, are you going to have them come in, the director and the supervisors to come in and talk about Rubicon? Did you approach them with this?
Yes, and they're waiting for data.
I can't hear you.
They will be coming in. They did not, they don't have any savings for this year.
Do you know why they don't have savings? Because they don't want to use it, because they don't want to track the workers. They don't, the union workers, and you, Mr. Schuster, Mr. McAndrew, will never fight them because you need their votes. They don't want Rubicon. They don't want to initiate it, they don't want to use it. It's not Rubicon's fault, it's the supervisor and the director's fault for not implementing it. Chris Smith tells me they have it. Well, if they were to call up, if they were to call up the truck driver and say, where are you? They'd know where he was. But where are the two guys in the back of the truck? I know where they are. They're home. That's why you can't get them.
So that, they said they haven't instituted the routes yet, but the routes should be done by the first or second week of April, and I believe that.
Yeah, well, let me, I want to know when and if they could track every worker in DPW. I want to know, I want you to bring them in here, the director and the supervisors. They need to come in to answer questions. The public needs to know from them, not just from you saying they have this and they have that. No, no, we need them. We need answers for every reason they're not using this. I know what it's like, because I worked for the water company, and they knew where I was every second of the day. And one guy was off his route, he was gone. Twice they caught him off his route, he's fired. You work for eight hours? We pay them for eight hours. That's what, hey, we could do, get followed at the water company, they could get followed at DPW. That's what Rubicon is for. But they're not using it because they don't want to. The union guys are running the show down there. They're sabotaging Rubicon. You think the supervisor and the director is going to follow them? You kidding? There'd be like a war down there. They're running the show, the union workers, and it has to stop because we're paying for it. Thank you, and get them in here as soon as possible.
Thank you, Fay.
I'd just like to. Thank you, Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I do have to start off tonight by giving everyone a big thank you. I come to this podium, anything that I say here, it's not just for me, it's for the city and the residents of Scranton. Anything that I've said about the stop signs or any conditions in Scranton, it's for me and the city residents. I love Scranton. Do I love it when I hit potholes and things? No. We all have certain things that we would like to see improved, but Scranton's a great place, and I'm enjoying my years that I'm back here in Scranton. So I thank everyone for the telephone calls that I got, the emails that I got, I even got mail, you know, congratulating cards in the mail. So I do thank everyone that took the time to, first of all, nominate me for that section in the Scranton Times. So they did a great job, and I just thought it was great. You know, I just finally read the whole thing yesterday because I was just blown away by it. So I give my thanks to everyone. The second thing I just passed out was a flyer that on Good Friday, there's going to be a fish fry at Shiloh Baptist Church at 1936 Wayne Avenue from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. The menu includes fish, potato salad, stewed tomatoes, green beans, and a dinner roll. Tickets can be purchased, and they have some names down there, but anyone that knows me can contact me on, send me a message or something, and I will be glad to meet you somewhere to get the tickets to you, okay? This is my sister's church, and like all churches, you know, they do, you know, they're suffering. So I do all I can to help wherever I can. So that's what I passed out to everyone. If anyone can just reach out to me with that, that would be great. The next thing that I wanted to talk about was visitors to our city. And I just kept, couldn't help but think that when companies coming to our home, we try to make our homes as best as we can when we have company. We look around and if we think if something needs to be painted, if the grass needs to be cut, if the bushes need to be cut, you know, we want to make our parents and as they approach our homes to be as nice as possible. So, and I think everyone shares that feeling, that when you have company coming, that you want it to be the best that you can. So we have a lot going on in August, and even in June, we're having the Electric City Flower Show, it's going to be in June. And I'm sure there's other things going on, and I know in August is the Jazz Festival. And I did read in the paper that there's going to be a conference that the mayor is hosting, and it's going to be at the Rad, it's going to be based at the Radisson. And they're going to be talking about different things of how they can make our cities better and things like that. I think that's what I got out of the article that I was reading. But I was thinking, it's going to be at the Radisson, and I spoke about this before, and I think I was told that it was $950,000 to repair that wall on Lackawanna Avenue. How many of us drive by that, we go up Lackawanna Avenue, turn there, and to our right is that decaying wall? If that was your home, you wouldn't be making sure that that was fixed. You would not want your company to come to your home and the front of your wall in your home was falling down. And if it looks like to me that it's getting worse, and it probably is because the rain and the weather is probably really taking its toll. The last time I spoke about it, they had said that there was a grant or something, but it wasn't enough. So I'd just like to know what the status of that is. Are we going to just wait until it falls down completely? And there is a bus stop there, and it's very liable if someone should be standing there and get hit by that wall that's decaying. And like I said, we have a lot of things coming into the city. So I just would like that. And another thing before, I have seven seconds. It was great on honoring all the women tonight, but it was just disappointing that it took us all these years in Scranton to get a female mayor. I couldn't help but hear all these names they're calling in Clark's Green, Clark Summit, all around us, and there was women mayors. So I want to thank the mayor again for running for office and being successful. And I also just noticed that we need diversity. We need diversity in our city and our government. And I stand here and I say that, and people say, well, you do it, Norma. If I was 20 years younger, I probably would. But right now, I just want to get behind those that I know are standing for diversity so that we can make Scranton really all-inclusive of everyone in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. You know, it's such a tragedy to see the shooting that took place. They're making the shooter look like he's a victim, not a she, a he. He was an assassin, and he murdered three children, took their lives away, three adults. And he murdered them. And they want to make him basically a hero, put his picture in the paper, question that he's transgender and all this nonsense. That's the issue that's going on, medications, different things that are screwing people up. But this individual, who he is, went and murdered these people. The real victims are those three children, the three adults, and the families that this animal destroyed their lives. And the news media is making him out to be something different. There's no sympathy for him in any way, shape, or form, no matter what they want to call him, a he, a she, or whatever. He was an assassin, a male, that killed these people. And that's what's happening in this country. We're taking credit for all the wrong people and giving them stuff that they don't deserve. You know, one of the things, we're talking about Geisinger, and everybody's arguing. You're familiar with Naog, which I raised many issues about, the parking up there on Naog for Geisinger. Why don't we sell that piece of land to Geisinger to build a parking garage for $8 or $10 million? We're letting them park cars there for peanuts, yet you pay $2 an hour in front of the hospital. So to get rid of the controversy here, sell that whole piece of land that they're parking cars on right now. And get rid of the authority up there. Put it back in the hands of the city, because it's incompetent what they're doing. And I'm sorry, somebody didn't want to hear it, but that's the way it was, because I had brought an action there a long time ago to straighten the mess out. I delivered a trailer load of disinfectant wipes to Palestine, Ohio. It was donated on behalf of myself and President Trump. We gave it to them, but a Scranton boy went to Palestine, Ohio, which I went down to deliver the load. Yet the president of Scranton came from Scranton and never bothered to go see these people. And that's the tragedy, what we're doing. We're giving honor to this individual. We name streets. And yes, I have an action against Bill Gahan, which was dismissed only due to a technicality. It's being refiled because he's going to be held accountable for violating the rules of council and what he's done to the people in this city and took their voice away, and then allow them to speak out, and they did speak out, and he shut the door on them. You got signs out here, all gender on the bathrooms. How many genders are there? I thought there's only a male and a female in this world. You could tell me there's a different gender out there, I'd really like to know what the hell it is. Or let's get back to where we belong, a male and a female, and put the pictures on the door like we're supposed to. Enough of this stupid nonsense and all this other crap going on. Jessica, you and I have gone around and around. I could see today that you never identified your profession. I understand you could be called doctor. I deal with physical therapists. I go to them, both here and in Florida. I have tremendous respect for them and you and your profession. However, I can't stand by because I have medical people in my family and see you call yourself doctor, but not say what type of doctor you are. So I went and filed a complaint with the Department of State and the Board of Physical Therapy to find out whether or not, as a public official, you should be addressing your profession. And it's a profession you should be damn well proud of, and I don't understand why you won't put it there. Because how many people around here have gone to a physical therapist and came out real well and better? All doctors sign prescriptions, and they do that. And I would still ask you to do it. I'm sorry I had to do this, but I can't rest and see something that isn't properly done and a misconception to people who watch what we're doing here, thinking you're a doctor or an MD or somebody else, even though you have the right to call yourself doctor, and I'm not objecting to that. I just wish you went and did it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here is, I just think that the shooting was a tragedy, and I hope that the police could have enacted sooner and saved the children, and I hope that the shooter, whatever her circumstances, could have received some kind of counseling and just avoided the whole situation. But I guess we don't live in a perfect world, but we're having discussions about weapons when really we need to have discussions about what's really broken our country, and it's our government. And it's been broke a very long time. As a matter of fact, the people that broke it were part of my generation. The baby boomers have actually taken this country to its knees. They've enacted laws and did things because they were the largest voting bloc in the country and used those numbers to do very, very bad things to this country. And, you know, you can talk about just a host of different issues, but, you know, to bring some of it back into focus today, we talk about grants and money, and last week we were talking about playgrounds. I find the way grant money is passed around has come through my generation. It's done great harm to the country. And it just continues, because when you look at playgrounds, 50% of women don't have any children at all. The largest generation in the history of our country is being replaced by the Generation Xers, which are the smallest generation. How many children do you think in the city will use a playground? You know where they need that grant money? They need it injected into the Scranton School District, where a laughingstock of the world We're a laughingstock of the world, and we still keep doing silly things as the baby boomers leave the political scene. The President of the United States is just an illustration of that. The politicians have learned to talk to the largest voting bloc, which is women, and convince them of the craziest things. And they've done very harmful things to themselves. They're talking about it around the world. Mental health professionals are talking about it. First, they took men's clubs apart, dismantled all those things, and had the men walk away from the polls. And now they're destroying women's sports and creating a gender that never existed. You know, you have to respect people, whether they're homosexual or straight, whatever identity they want to have, it's fine. But you can't create whole new genders. You should never force a woman to compete against a biological man, ever. And we're the laughingstock of the world, and they play videos of it on YouTube, and it doesn't turn out well. And we're lying to a whole generation. And when you go to, like, Tuncanic or Troy or other school districts, they've got children using litter boxes as bathrooms. This is what this president has brought this country to. Okay? This is the baby boomers in control. You take a look at this, Council. There's not one word about what's happened to ECTV. Not one. Not one. Not one word allowing the residents of the city to put the Home Rule Charter on the ballot. Not one. But we speak about abstract thoughts, creating authorities, which are a funnel for money, projects that have no merit, which is a funnel for money. We're talking about patronage and transfer of wealth and money. But we don't talk about empowering citizens, putting grant money in the hands of people who own homes and properties and homes in this city so that we can try to help them. Okay? What we're doing is we're protecting our power base. And what we're doing to the country is just terrible. We're getting ready to face our greatest enemy soon, which is China. And we've increased social spending, and we've cut military spending. In the next war, you won't have the time that you had during the Second World War to change your position, because the world will be over in about two weeks, maybe a couple of days. Think about it. Get rid of the political parties.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next up, you know, I'm going to try to pronounce this. I'm not sure if I'm... Is there a Charlie Cortez here? I'm sorry, I couldn't reach her.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Charles Cortez. Myself and my family are multiple property owners in the 200 block of Wheeler Avenue. I am here again tonight to request that you, council members, support the zoning that would restrict the height of the proposed parking garage to 45 feet on the outside of the 200 block of Colfax Avenue and restrict the traffic exiting from the parking garage to Sherwood Court. Why give Geisinger an approved zoning ordinance of 100-foot-high structure at this time for them to do as they wish now and anytime in the future? Any reputable engineering firm can design and build a 45-foot structure with future expansion in their design without destroying the existing structure. Why not let Geisinger request a variance in the future as their expansions warrants? After all, we are not prognosticators. We cannot foretell the future. I am sure that the zoning board had good intentions when they carved Colfax Avenue into two separate and unique areas with distinct permit usage. Splitting a city block down the center is like putting up a spite fence between you and your neighbors. I still cannot fathom what value there is to split a city block down the center except to give maximum advantage to Geisinger and to pit all concern against each other and destroy the Na'od area community. The mayor stated at the Scranton City Council Caucus meeting on the 21st of March that if Geisinger does not meet their expansion plans, they will expand elsewhere. Is the hierarchy of Geisinger that shallow that they would abandon their expansion plans because they can't get their 100-foot-high parking lot? The mayor also stated that in every compromise, someone will get the short end of the stick. I assume that she meant that someone will suffer the consequences of the zoning board's decision. Mayor, you are correct. We, the citizens of Wheeler and Colfax Avenue, got the short end of the stick. This is not a compromise. This is pandering to Geisinger to give them the advantage to meet their aggressive narrative. The sticks should be divided equally with all concern getting their equal measure. The past and future speakers who have and will address council and cite a most significant guise here know that they will not have a 100-foot wall in the front or backyard. It is also understandable that employees of Geisinger, whatever their capacity or position is, will champion the cause of Geisinger when they speak to council. They imply that the Na'od area community is against hospital expansion. Ultimately, it is in their best interest not to bite the hand that feeds them. I state emphatically that we are not against expansion, but I walk past to the residents of Colfax and Wheeler Avenue. Na'od visitors have mentioned that the area surrounding Na'od Park is like a little bit of paradise within the city with its beautiful homes that surround and complement the park with the spiral steeples and tremendous stained glass windows, which have now become landfill fodder for the sake of a 100-foot-high parking garage. A sign on the bottom of Mulberry Street near the university Scranton reads "Historical Hill Section." Perhaps another sign next, which should read "The Ghosli Ruins of the Historical Na'od Section." The 200 block of Wheeler Avenue will be on the fast track to become another blighted section of Scranton City and the Na'od community with a Geisinger entity in their backyard with its 100-foot walls, with its distinct and independent existence and void of any attractive feature that blocks the sun and summer breezes for the sake of parking. For this council's vision and commitment to Scranton to ensure the coexistence and harmony of all concerned, to make Scranton a greater city and a model of negotiation and compromise. Again, we are open for compromise for the American way to resolve our differences. I'm also sure that many of you remember a particular sign which is appropriate to this parking garage dilemma. Part of the lyrics read, "That you don't know what you've got till it's gone. They paved paradise and put up a parking lot." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Next up, Mr. Ron Elman.
People, of all the asinine, ridiculous, rash statements ever, and I've made plenty of them, the mayor's prosperous absurdity, if we don't cave into Geisinger's demands, they might Right now, the city has them over a barrel. They should have to pay every single taxable property on all those houses and tie it up with a class action suit or do something for the people of this city for once, instead of worrying about all these people hiding... God, who knows how many pieces of property have just disappeared forever under this phony Pure Charity Act. Scranton University has taken over 150 properties. And look what Lackawanna College has done downtown. This isn't a college town. You know, this is a town that has lost a third of its property. If this... Anybody could see the writing on the wall when somebody is buying property after property after property, nobody did a thing to stop them, to comment on it. Now they have devalued one of the state's most beautiful areas. It's never going to be the same. It's going... These people will end up just like me. They'll be paying insurance what their property was worth five years ago, and it's going to be a fraction of it. I pay over $1,000 extra on my insurance when my house was valued at 100 and some thousand. Last year, they told me it's worth 75. They raised it, I think they raised it 44, then 27 or something. This is going to happen to all you people in Na'od. They have to get it... Your houses won't be worth what your insurance is. You know, what's going on here to the people that are paying for everything? This is a dirty, rotten shame. We need a voice. The people need a voice, and there doesn't seem to be one. I keep talking about how bad my neighborhood has gotten. These people don't care. You know, Alaski doesn't care. The whole city, any street you go down, it's not like it was a few years ago. Four houses from me, somebody stole their car last week at night. Yesterday, a boy on a bicycle went up my driveway to see what was in my garage, you know? That's what's happened to my neighborhood. That's what's going to happen to the neighborhood around Na'od if you don't stop this insanity, letting these people... 10, 20 years from now, you're going to have to go through it all over again. They're never going to be happy. What's happening, you're going to appease these people, and appeasement never ends. You'll be doing it forever, I guess. It's a dirty, rotten shame, you know? I talked to two, three, four people at the grocery store, the gas stations, and people are hypocrites. They tell me all these things, but openly, they won't say them. You can't imagine how many people said something when I complained about the Congolese kids in school. $10,000 apiece for six kids. Now the people on food stamps, they're sending their kids to school, and we have to feed People say these things, but they don't want to get up here. They don't want to be quoted. Like I said, it's just a hypocritical mess, I guess. You've seen my neighborhood. It's bad, isn't it, compared to how it was a few years ago when Jack Liptide took care of it? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. That exhausts the sign-in sheet. Would anybody else like to speak?
Counsel, first, I object to 5E on the DACA tonight. I would rather pay $50,000 to an independent counsel who is responsible both to the mayor and counsel equally than allow the mayor an even more concentrated control since the solicitor for the city is already burdened with a 40-plus-hour work week. It is unfair and poor labor standards to impact and increase her load. We already have two oversight contractors. This third appointment is an abuse of the taxpayer. At last session, I was mad at the end of the council session. I was not sure why, but for a day, I could not get it out of my head, and I let it roll about in my brain. A lot of issues bothered me. Let's consider neutrality and special interests. When the mayor asked Geisinger for talking points to use when citizens were protesting about the parking garage, we have a mayor who, when confronted by her citizens, reached out to an entity to request PR to combat the public opinion. The mayor chooses to defend a private entity over the public who appointed her.
Excuse me, Mr. Coyne. Are these emails?
Yes, they are. We have a mayor's office who lied. In the Recovery Act's initial announcement, they quoted that they received valuable input from community members through one-on-one interviews and small group sessions held with more than 45 stakeholders. But in investigating that, there was no meeting. There were no internal communications. Everything was done in private. It was a pet project, and the spending was planned before the community was ever presented a facade of choice. We have been told that Na'od can't use funds because it's not an approved tract for funding as it is not impacted. No backup information asked to validate this opinion or any documents on this supposed new final directives. The final ruling, government services were not bound and impacted by the tract regulations, but were bound only by showing impacted groups. In tossing softballs, what council failed to ask in the questioning of the park using funds was, if the funds can only be used in impacted tracts and disadvantaged tracts, how is the city using over $300,000 on electric cars? What qualified tract are the electric cars justified in? It seems like a double standard. And last, I asked Mr. King... Is Mr. King present on the phone?
I don't think he ever connected.
Okay. Last, I asked Mr. King at the council session to provide information on the special session for more information after the session ended. He had said that there was a special session that related to both personal matters and litigation. I asked him to confer with council for this body, because according to Redding Eagle Company versus Council, decided by the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania on June 24, 1993, the reason must be meaningful. It must be more than some generalized term, which means, in reality, tells the public nothing. To simply say personalized matter or litigation tells the public nothing. My question is, since we are required to have more information, and particularly what they give is when you call up on litigation, you need to present the case number. When you call up on personal matters, you need to disclose whether or not it's because of employee malpractice, an incident of crime, whether it's for raises, or specific criteria that need to be divulged. Just saying a generalized reason falls afoul of the law. And unfortunately, he's not here, because I was going to ask the chair, now that he's been provided with the court case, is he willing to comply with the regulations of the law, or is he going to willfully violate it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Would anybody else like to speak?
Dave Rinaldi, Colfax Avenue in Scranton. First thing I'd like to make a remark. I've been here at the last couple of meetings, and I've really not heard speakers with such hate in their heart that they had tonight. I want to apologize for the community. No one deserves that. All right. So I have two things I want to talk to you about tonight. One, if you remember, a week ago, one of my neighbors came up to this podium and asked and begged council to have Geisinger buy her house and the house next to her. I want to remind council that at the time that Geisinger was running around buying properties, they had not released any plans. So these are people who wanted to stay in the neighborhood and felt that, whatever the plans were, they would not impact their life in that section, in the Na'od Park section. Now, when the plans finally came out, of course, just lately, after 1623, when the map changed the last time, that made... map changed the last time, that made these people, well, my neighbors anyway, think about, well, what's it going to be like with 100-foot structure in front of their house? Well, let's, let's take Geisinger's figures, approximately $400,000 for a house on the even side of 200 Colfax. 100-foot garage goes up. Maybe the house is worth, maybe, if you can rent it, and I'm not sure that the zoning will allow for it, maybe it's worth 100, 125. Who's going to make up that difference? Who's going to make up the difference to these people who put their whole lives in it? And, and if in fact the zoning goes through, then it's not going to be Geisinger. It may be the city that has to make the people whole for what the zoning has done to their properties. So I want you to keep that in mind. Who, who is going to pay? Is it going to be Geisinger as a cost of doing business or will it be the city sometime later? All right. The second thing I want to talk to you about was a couple of weeks ago, I brought up the fact that Geisinger put all these restrictions on the properties, the 20 properties that they bought in that, in that area, and that would be Roslin, Colfax and Wheeler. Well, actually, none of them are on Wheeler. They're, they're all on Roslin or Colfax. Anyway, I did some calculation and first of all, all the improvements were gone. I went to the assessors' off, office records, by the way. And it turns out that just in the reduction in the assessments by getting rid of the improvements, the city lost a little over $25,000 a year. The school district lost $15,300 a year. Now, that would be bad enough if in fact they were going to pay taxes. But what I discovered was, you know, they appealed all these assessments. And do you know in 2023, all of those properties are exempt? The city didn't, is not even getting tax revenue for 2023 for properties that aren't being used for hospital purposes. Now, I don't know what the administration did. I don't know whether you send someone over there. I know the school district does at these zoning, at these assessment board hearings. But someone has to be paying attention. They should not be getting out of their tax bill until they actually develop the properties. So that's what you're losing now and this is just part of it. I don't, I haven't done the calculations over on the 400 block or any other block. But certainly, the city is losing a significant amount of money. And if you want some leverage, if the zoning wasn't changed, they'd be paying, assuming that it went back on the rolls like it should be, $50,000 a year forever. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi.
Hi, Doris Kloski, Scranton, resident. I'm, hopefully I can remember what I came up here to say because I was not coming up here to say anything till I heard other speakers. First of all, I want to say about Mr. Bolus, whatever he said, I hope nobody takes to heart. He, the shooter didn't shoot people because he was transgender or she was transgender. It was because they were mentally unbalanced. But more importantly, it was because of the access to all these weapons. I am a carry permit gun owner, so I'm not anti-gun or completely gun control. But we do need to have bans on ARs. We don't need to have assault weapons. We don't need to have silencers. We don't need to have large magazine rounds. All these things, we need sensible gun laws. We need deep background checks on people and get them into mental health. We need red flag laws. And right now in Harrisburg, there are bills pending for secure storage, deep background checks, et cetera, banning assault weapons. And they're still, they're laying there waiting to be voted upon. So I urge everybody to contact their people and to please have, see if you can get people to vote for sensible gun laws. This killing, it's just too much. If I had children today, I don't know what I would do. I really don't. I mean, it's awful. Okay, that was that. Now, Geisinger, again, everybody's laughing. Here I go with Geisinger. Now, I just wanted to say that this whole idea of them threatening the city that they will pull out, are they the mafia? I mean, what is going on here? Does anybody feel they want to be held hostage? If that's what they get, then what else are they going to do when they really own the whole city? They're really going to hold people in the city more hostage? I mean, we have other hospitals here. We don't, they want to drive them out because they want to be the one and only hospital and take away your choice. So just keep that in mind about not having choice. Think how nice it was when Bell Telephone got broke up and you had choices. People want choices. You want all the hospitals. You want Lee High Valley, you want Mercy, you want Moses and you want Geisinger. And we're not against an expansion. But to threaten people and to threaten the city and have the city backing down to them, what's next when they have everything they want? Thank you.
Thank you, Doris.
Marie Schumacher. I'm really disappointed that Mr. King isn't here. He never said a word about not being here this week when he, when I asked for him to come today prepared with something for what we're going to do about all of these nonprofits that are not paying taxes. And so it's, it is disappointing. Now, are you people even aware that in the city of Scranton, there are 1,605 parcels that are not, are exempt from paying taxes? And supposedly, according to the, what the people in Harrisburg did when they, when they did that, they expected that those people would bring something to the table and they call it a PILOT, which isn't, has anything to do with a plane, but it is the acronym for payment in lieu of taxes. Now, out of those 1,605 properties, there are a grand total of nine, nine, that are giving something. And I think it's time that you people get together and come up with something. I mean, at least letters, I don't know. I would put you two by two and visit them personally. It just doesn't, is not right. You know, I'm going to go down tomorrow and pay my property tax and it doesn't make me feel very good that all these people are not contributing to the city. Now, I'll move off that because it doesn't make me feel good. The Sunday paper noted that there were two burglars who had, or burglary suspects that faced numerous charges, including violating the Officer John Wilding law. Now, I don't know how many of you remember John Wilding, who was a, who back in 2015 went to chase somebody and went over a, thought he was going over a wall and it was a stair wall, stairwell. And he fell in and he died. And just this law that the state did, somebody, interestingly enough, it was somebody from Luzerne County that got up the stat, the statute for this law. Now, but this law is chasing somebody. The body of which you are a part now, back in that same time, oh, they were, everybody was upset and they were going to do something. They were going to put something in that if you had a, a wall and there wasn't ground on the other side, that you would have to put a railing. Now, I've gone through the codes and I have not found that legislation. So here we are, how many years later, and I don't believe it's there. If I'm mistaken, you know, I will say it, but I don't believe there is one there and I think there should be. And it just bothers me when you people go off to do good things and then they don't get done. And then the abutment that my young friend talked about, I have noticed that myself. When I come down Jefferson Avenue, that thing that's a butt, a butt it to the divider and it goes down and, you know, Tom talked about it too. He thought something should be done. If I probably wouldn't get, I mean, I'd be happy to go buy a pail of yellow water or yellow paint and go down and paint it, but I'd probably get arrested for doing something with the private, or public property. So please, start looking at those. I'm serious. We need something to offset the no taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Waldenberg, could you please circle around? I do remember some conversation about stairwells without railings because of this Officer Wilding law. So can we see where we're at with that? If not, we need some legislation. Okay?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Rinaldi, Scranton. I noticed something about speakers last week when thinking about it. If you go to hear a band, which way are the speakers pointed towards you? And everybody back here, now, it hasn't been that bad tonight after the hall emptied up, but in reality, our speakers are pointed the wrong way and they have been for years. So I don't think we'd need any new equipment other than what we have to bring it down and maybe put it here or over there.
We were actually getting a new speaker. We had, we tested one, there was one tested a couple of weeks ago that, that everybody pretty much agreed that it was better, so.
Yeah. The way, the way those are oriented, you people here are better than anybody down in the audience. So let's, let's move on a little bit. I have a few things here. Mining under Naog. I misplaced the article, but it's something to consider before any major heavy projects go in there. And it might even be, there might even be information available at the Bureau of Mines, like maps and so forth, where these people were caught illegally mining under Naog Park. So it was possibly well over 100 years ago, possibly a few years after the Civil War, but it was, they were caught under Naog taking coal out. And, okay, Saturday, and I don't know where that article, I have to get down to see, see the archivist at the Times and pay him whatever fee he wants, but there was an article on tax exempt. The last figures were available in 2019. In Lackawanna County, 18% of the property is tax exempt and 2/3 of it, 12% of that property resides in Scranton, Pennsylvania. So in other words, if you consider the population of Lackawanna County as opposed to us, we're about 1/3. We're paying double on tax exempt properties. And I won't call them nonprofits. That's, that's all. It doesn't matter what they're doing. It's that they're producing services for the whole county and possibly other major portions of the state because when some of these hospitals can't stay afloat, they close and then the people are here. They're coming here. So why they closed, gee, I don't know, but in some states that didn't accept the Affordable Care Act, they're closing at an astronomical rate. You could have to, for to deliver a baby, drive across three or four counties. You might have an hour drive to get your wife to the hospital. And it's, we're actually paying 100% more on tax exempt property. So I'm not picking on anybody, but something has to change. And I think the state should be brought to task that they should replace the money after a certain point. It would be nice to have half of our tax exempt property tax replaced by the state of Pennsylvania and then everybody can pay instead of a handful of people. And the hospital, I had a brainstorm of, it would be interesting to find out what their financial situation is. They claim they lost $800 million and I'm not going to call them liars, but I strongly suspect if they showed up and did a reasonable analysis, it might be because of COVID. A lot of people showing up in bad shape there forever and unfortunately, they can't pay the bill from up there if it exists. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Duff. Okay, anybody else?
Fifth order, five-day motion.
Mr. Smurl, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First is, on Saturday, I was on Interstate 81 up by the O'Neill Highway exit and I saw Pendot out there with multiple street sweepers and a lot of equipment up there cleaning. So I assume they have started their spring cleaning. So I drove down the Biden Expressway and I took pictures on my way down to Cedar Avenue, also over to Jefferson Avenue, and then I did the exit ramps going up to, or the ramps going up to 81 South and 81 North. I also took pictures from there. So, Mr. Waldenberg, I forwarded pictures to you today of all of the spots where all the litter lines, the both sides of the ramps. So would you contact Pendot and ask them if they are doing spring cleanup, if they would look at this area?
I'll do that, sir.
Thank you. And the second thing I have, the request I made a few weeks ago, I was speaking with Chief Carroll about commercial tractors parked in the city, cars parked over sidewalks, blocking sidewalks where people have to go into the street. It seems it's all over the city. So I spoke to Chief Carroll about the ordinance and he suggested we send a request to the law department and get a, an opinion on what, if anything, we can change in that ordinance so that we were able to tag these vehicles or, or have them removed, especially the commercial vehicles and the residential areas. So, Mr. Waldenberg, if you will forward that to the law department?
I will, sir.
Thank you. And my last thing is, we are going to start, I said when I was appointed to counsel, that one of my things besides Naog Park's pool was to start cleaning up the blight in the city. So I am going to, actually, we've started to reform the group of So I am going to, actually, we've started to reform the group of volunteers we had at Naog Park, and we are going to go into the city and begin cleanup in about two weeks. I have, Eileen Cipriani was kind enough to give me all of the properties that, from the land bank and other properties that the city owns that are overgrown, and so we're going to go back out and start doing those properties. I will let everyone know when and where we're going to be. So if anyone else wants to volunteer and come and meet us and help, you will be welcome. And that is all I have.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, two, two comments that I have. So, one, Mr. Waldenberg, can we reach out to the business administrator and possibly Matt Dominus and see that, we did see that there was a $2.6 million accounting error that occurred where money is going to be returned to the school district? Could you reach out to them to get an update on how this affects our 2023 budget?
I'll do that, sir.
Secondly, we discussed a while back, and I know the mayor even discussed it, about getting a HUP test done for our nonprofits. Can we also look at, send some correspondence to the BA's office about what is the status of that test?
I confirmed today that they're working on it, but I'll get a more definite status.
All right, if we could possibly get a timeline or where they're at? Thank you. That's all, Mr. McCann.
Okay, Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes. First, I just want to add some information. Ms. Schumacher had asked about the pilots and if we could send letters, and I did want to let her know that we, that the city has sent letters to, to exempt properties and nonprofit organizations requesting pilot money in the past, and they've done that this year and still had only gotten the nine pilots. So obviously, we need to do something different or additionally to get more pilots, which I'm fully supportive and, and happy to look into and see what avenues we can take to encourage those organizations or property owners to, to donate or provide pilot money to the city. I do think that would be very important and helpful for the city, and that we should be asking that even if, if just the letter hasn't, hasn't done the trick. Maybe in other ways too, like you said, maybe the, the larger organizations that we know about, meeting, meeting with them. I'm not sure that that would take, if that would come from, from council or the administration, but I'd like to make sure that that's being done as well. And secondly, I wanted to say that I'm really proud that we could honor so many women, women here tonight in chambers, women from across Lackawanna County who were the first to serve as elected officials in their townships and in their cities. And I know that these women helped pave the way for, for myself to be here on council, so I'm really appreciative for those women being the first. It's always incredibly important for them to be first because they're able to break those, those barriers and to make it easier for others to, to come afterwards. But the joy I felt from that was quickly extinguished by some of the public comments that we received tonight that were in reference to people's genders. And we just finished recognizing these trailblazing women, and then there are people who are wanting to condemn the transgender community. And I, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that I, I just can't sit here in silence and not say anything about it. And I think it's really sad that some people, their focus and their energy so much is on just spewing hate against communities that are, that are not of their own or communities that they don't understand or want to try to understand. It's just, it's sad to me. I feel bad for people that, that feel the need to do that because you clearly don't have, you're not spending time on other things that I think would be more useful. And so there are many, I think, misinformed and disdainful points that I'm, that I'm not going to bring up, but I think the worst implication was that the Nashville shooter committed those horrendous acts because she was transgender. And I didn't even know that up until this point, but it, it doesn't matter because what she did was, was, like I said, horrendous and shouldn't be happening, and they're happening all too often within our country. And I think it's, it's just meant to be hurtful to people within the transgender community, but then it's also very disrespectful to the, to the parents and the families that, that lost, lost those children and the teachers. And it's obviously emotional for me as a, as a parent, too. So there's just so much more to the issue of gun violence and mass shootings than, than just mental health. And so I know that it won't be the last time that there are comments like that within council chambers, even though I certainly hope that it will be. But just know, I'm, I'm still here and I'm happy to speak out in support of the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any motions or comments at this time, Mr. Waldenberg. I'm sorry, Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
I, I know that Marie Schumacher mentioned something about pilots, and I just want to tell her that I did meet with the mayor this past week, and Matt Dominis is working on that HUP test that was mentioned just earlier. And, you know, I'm planning to go through that list and trying to go out and identify certain nonprofits that we can approach even personally to talk about, trying to get them to start contributing a little bit, you know? Even though they're nonprofits, we'd like to see some payments in lieu of taxes made to contribute to our city. So we are continuing to work on that. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you.
5B, for introduction and ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the easterly side of the 1700 and 1800 blocks of Bloom Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to allow for access of large vehicles to traverse the roadway.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I've been mentioning this for, for a little while now. We had a study completed by engineering on these streets because of a resident complaint that they were too narrow for, for DPW vehicles to fit through in order to pick up refuse. And so because of that, the, the study came back and said that it would be more appropriate for, for parking to occur on just one side of the street instead of both. So that's why you see this ordinance here tonight.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C, for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to convey to Pennsylvania American Water Company a deed of easement and right of way to construct, operate, and repair a combined sewage overflow containment tank in the vicinity of South Washington Avenue Pump Station.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D, for introduction, a resolution accepting a donation presented to the City of Scranton Fire Department from Greg L. Sunday and Joan M. Sunday in the amount of $5,000 in memory of Scranton firefighter Stephen Sunday to purchase equipment.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it and so moved.
Bitter loud and quiet.
5E, for introduction, a resolution adding the responsibilities of American Rescue Plan Act Solicitor to the city Solicitor Jessica Escrie's portfolio and allocating ARPA administrative funds accordingly pursuant to the City of Scranton's ARPA Spending Plan, Resolution Number 69 of 2022.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'll, I'll be voting no for this tonight. I did have similar concerns when it came to Mrs. Cipriani and, and taking on other duties. The Law Department this year and the 2023 budget was shifted around. We do have seven lawyers in the department now, from eight from the previous year. We've added a new lawyer for $77,000 a year, and we've given raises across that department, so I'm not really in favor of adding more duties onto Solicitor Escrie's plate.
Also on the question, I feel the same as, as Councilman Schuster. So we have some oversight already for ARPA, us, two contracted, two contracted entities that are, that are watchdogs. And we did shift the Law Department around. We did give them large increases. And like, I had the concern when Mrs. Cipriani became the ARPA Director, so if we're going to give $25,000 more to Attorney Escrie, how much is she going to work? How many hours is she going to work for that $25,000 towards, towards the distribution of the ARPA funds? Because last time, when Mrs. Cipriani got a large raise, it turned out she'd be working seven hours a week and, and for that amount of money after me inquiring. So I feel the same about this. And, you know, I'm leaning towards what Mr. Coin said. I'd rather pay the extra money to have someone who would work on it eight hours a day, not eight minutes a day. And that's what it's going to come out to, so that is why I'm a no.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the Council Number 55, 2023, creating and establishing special city escrow account number, as noted, entitled FSA City Employees to Accept and Disburse Funds Received from City Employees Participating in the City's Flexible Spending Account Program that permits City Employees to use pre-tax money to pay for eligible healthcare expenses.
What is a recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend a final vote on item 7A.
Three seconds.
On the question?
On the question, I'm going to make a motion to table this item. For the last three weeks, we've asked for some information on how this fund is going to be administered, so we're just waiting on that, that information before final passage.
I'll second that motion. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Is this to?
To table.
To tables?
To table.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to be.
On the question.
Do you want to say anything on the question?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
All right, motion table, motion table. All right, eighth order, all business. Go ahead.
Eighth order, 8A, file the Council Number 53, 2023.
This ordinance is the establishment of an environmental advisory county for the city, and it was tabled until more information is received.
8B, file the Council Number 54, 2023.
This is a zoning ordinance, and it has been tabled as required by the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. It will be brought back from the table and placed in seventh order for a vote after a public hearing is held on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. If there's no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
This meeting has adjourned.